We'll call a special meeting to order this time and we'll turn it over to Ms. Cotto.
Thank you. Chairman Commissioners, this is another session of your budget sessions that we began probably back in December. It actually started on Halloween when we established the priorities the Board wanted to hear additional information about. And with that, I will turn it over to, okay, I'm going to have to remember, Kristal Gilley, the Register of Deeds.
Good afternoon. I hope everybody can see where. All right. I will try not to, I know none of you had a big lunch, so I'll try not to bore you. I tried to put some pictures in here to make it a little interesting. But we'll go ahead and start with our mission statement. To provide exceptional customer service to the residents of Union County and preserve and protect all records in a manner that ensures integrity, completeness, accuracy, and safekeeping. I'll tell you a little bit about the office. We are actually divided up into three departments, so to speak, or service areas. The first one is real estate where we record, scan, index all documents that come in to the office, assume names, new businesses, maps. We index them, we check them per statute, and we provide ongoing protection of these records for future use as well as preserving the old books and paper copies. Recording these documents provides a public notice to everyone. It lets people know what you're doing, what you're borrowing, what you're putting on your property, what your property looks like, and it contributes to the development of the history of the county. Our records go back to 1842 and they grow every day. And our other area, it's vital records. We do the same thing, but we're dealing with birth, death certificates, marriage certificates, license. We administer notaries and we record DD-214s, which are military discharges. We work very close with the Health Department and North Carolina Vital Records in Raleigh, and we also preserve those records as well. This service in this area plays a key role in the day-to-day lives of Union County residents, from somebody trying to get their child on insurance to getting married and then providing proof, legal proof of that document. So it does affect everyone's day-to-day lives. Passports is something that we started new in December. We are serving as acceptance agents for the Department of State and reviewing the applications from those seeking passports. We also provide photos. That's been a big plus as well. And just to let you know, this is the only facility in Union County that offers this service. So we're very excited about this. We had to fill out numerous applications and get approval from the Department of State, so we're very excited about this. On top of doing these general duties day-to-day, we do answer the phones and assist all walk-ins. They could be residents or non-residents of Union County, and they try to obtain information to meet their personal or financial needs. I'll tell you a little bit about the staffing structure. It's myself is the register. I have an assistant that's over the whole area, Mary Hogan. In my real estate area, I have the following people: Stella Hutz, Katie, Andy Hogan, Wayne Miller, Joyce Tarleton. The people who are noted as an asterisk are passport agents. You might notice that under vital records, there's nobody that has an asterisk notated because those individuals in that department cannot issue passports if they issue their certificates or marriage license. So that was one of the, I guess, drawbacks on trying to open up a passport facility because if I had 10 people in my office, not all 10 people can do them. So it narrowed down to only individuals in my real estate area that could handle passports. They call this as a conflict of interest. You can't have two duties of office. So that was kind of a challenge, but I think we're meeting that need. Let me tell you a little bit about the real estate area. We record all kinds of documents. And when I say all kinds of documents, we can record a chili recipe, we can record a notice. We recorded a picture of a house before that was drawn. So there's all kinds of stuff that we can take because if they meet the certain needs that we need on that document, we can't reject them. We would get in more trouble rejecting than if we just didn't accept it. So of course, that means that a lot of times, we deal with attorneys, surveyors, and the general public who like to draw their own documents. And we also deal with sovereign citizens. As we all know, those are pretty interesting documents themselves. These documents are brought in, we scan them in, and we hand them right back to the public. Each document is indexed and it's unique in our system and numbered. These documents can range from anything just being very simple to pull the names off to having 300-plus names on them. They have to be indexed and cross-indexed, and sometimes these documents only bring in $100. But it takes my staff up to three days to index these documents because people have to be able to find them. The real estate market is a huge driver in this area of the office, but it's not affected much if the market is up or down. And the example is if you have foreclosure in the recession, when you have foreclosure documents, you have numerous documents because there's a notice that they're being foreclosed on, there's a substitute trustee, there's all kinds of documents that have to be filed, and those usually end up just being a nominal fee. Whereas a total sale in the, I guess, the county, like a $500,000 house, well, that stamp and all that transaction is a whole lot more than a foreclosure. But the number of documents that come with those foreclosures are very numerous. So even though the money is a good indication, in our office, it's not a true meaning of what the Register of Deeds office does because whenever that document comes in, we have to index it and scan it and put it in the server and put it out for public use, just like a regular document. So I just, you know, I have to really keep people in mind for that just because of the recession that we just hit, you know, I guess 2008, 2009, we still had the same number of documents came in even though the money was down. So that's, just keep that in mind. The Register of Deeds is responsible for any errors or liability issues that may come up, and I'm also responsible seven years after I leave office. So it's very important that these individuals are trained, that they're certified, and that we get good qualified workers in there. And then we also assist, like I said, all the customers that come in on the phone or, like I said, walking in to navigate the website. We show them how to use the system in-house so they can get the information that they need. We also, we assist a lot of surveyors trying to find maps and so forth. Vital records. We record and issue all the birth, death, and marriage certificates and notaries and military discharges. These come in by mail, walk-ins, or electronic. These are done the same way. They're scanned in. But we, the difference is, we keep the original documentation on this side. And our job is to review and certify records we provide for the public. We spend a lot of time with customers who need to change their birth records. Dad's not on there, misspelled last name, mama's name's not right, birthday's not right. So we work very hard in getting that information. This is very time-consuming because we have to work with Raleigh. They get that record and they're the official record keeper. So we have to get the documentation from the customer. We work with them. It could be up to six to eight months working with this customer to get what they need, just depending on the request that they need. Death certificates, if they're not right, it's the same thing. And you can imagine, if you can't get that death certificate corrected or a certified copy, that person's on hold to do any other estate work, get any life insurance. And the same thing with birth. They can't get their insurance either. Marriages are time-consuming. We have to review the documents and the proof of citizenship. You can go, as long as you get married in the state of North Carolina, you can come into any county and get a marriage license. So we have lots of people coming in from different areas. Some people live here, some people don't. A lot of the plus is, they don't want to deal with Mecklenburg County with the traffic and where the complex is. So we get a lot of those overflows. And a lot of times, we're dealing with these. These are all legal documents, so we have to make sure that this information is correct. So we spend a lot of time with these customers making sure that these, you know, all this information is correct and they can get their certification that they need. Passports. I don't know if anybody's had any feedback or anything, but I know when I've been out and about, a lot of people have come up, they've been in the office, they're so excited that this is now available to the office. And, you know, passports are not just limited to county residents or North Carolina. It's open to everybody. It's across the state, everything. So it's been a great, I think, reaching out, you know, and getting the word out and letting people know that we're, you know, we're in business and we're hopefully doing it correct. I'm going to give you a little historical overview. When I was elected in 2004, the office had no fully integrated computer system. As kind of, it's kind of hard to put in words where we've come. I wanted to put that little picture of we've come a long way, baby. But we really, really have. Everything was entered into a cash register. I think Richard Long probably remembers all that.
I do.
Everything was hand-stamped. We stayed very late hours in trying to balance. And in 2006, I had enough of blue hair from all the ink that we had all over us. And we got to install a receipting scan and indexing program. This enabled us to remove a lot of our manual steps and free up the staff to concentrate on helping customers and actually doing their job without having to try to catch up and search for things. This enabled us to reduce postage by several thousands of dollars and scanning the images up front and handing them back to customers. We don't keep any of those documents. We used to have mail buckets and they would just be piled. We don't keep any original documents anymore. I was always afraid of having a fire at night and walking in the next day and not being able to have those records scanned in. We also initiated e-recording a couple of years ago, which enabled us to handle not only, we get documents across the counter, people come in, but now this whole e-mode is going into full blast, and we now accept all kinds of documents electronically. This allows this information to go directly into our system. We index it. We don't touch the paper. We don't do anything. We approve it, we send it back, and it's in our system. So we don't have to make envelopes. We don't have to print copy paper, and we're not sitting there spending postage as well. Our current recording workload is done about 55% electronically. I think it's probably going to take off a lot more this year because they are pushing full e-closings. They did their first one in North Carolina in October of last year, and it's a big initiative of the Secretary of State's office. So we're trying to get ready for that. Because whether it's paper or electronic, the process is still the same. It just, it cuts out some other areas and most of its money for postage and so forth. We also initiated rekeying documents, which all that means is, when a document is, it comes in, I have an indexing unit. They take the document and they pull their all the information off. And instead of looking at it on a piece of paper and missing things, she blindkeys it again. So it's being indexed on the front, back in a separate room, and then somebody's blindkeying again. That has tremendously reduced our errors. So we are very fortunate to have that function. Our information is automatically transferred to Logan Systems, who handles our full computer system and support. We have servers in the office that are maintained by senior staff and Logan. We have over 10 million images available for viewing. Remember, we go back to 1842 to present day. This computer system also allowed us to balance our monies with fewer errors and has allowed us to keep account of changes in the system and who makes those changes. And it's great because I can print all these different reports, different years, different ways, and it really is a good comparison when I come to budget time or when somebody asks a question, you know, what do you think the increase of this is going to be? Vital records. This was actually completely manual until just several years ago. I sat down with my computer vendor and we worked on a program similar to real estate because it worked so well. And we started scanning in this stuff up front. This has tremendously cut down the staff in that area because they used to have to go take the books apart, put it on a copier, feed the security paper in, take it out, certify it, and give it back. Now they hit a thing and it prints out, they sign, and they can go on their way. Because as you can probably imagine, getting death certificates, they don't just give one. They get like 20. So that was a constant, just dragging down of time and staff. So that's cut out a lot of that, you know, just taking the books apart. Everything has been scanned in and is also used by genealogists. The marriage, there have been marriage kiosks that have been installed. This is where a couple can come in. They can fill out the application. They turn around, they say it's done. We pull it up. It saves so much time because, as you can imagine, they decide to get married on Friday morning. They come in, they don't have all their information. So it's a lot of time and you waiting around and so forth. Some had just got divorced, so we have those too. But believe it or not, we actually have no more card than paper. That's how we used to have to do marriages. And that was not too wrong ago, so it's almost embarrassing. But we got it done and then we're moving forward. The office also uses a company called Permedium, which is a third-party vendor that handles all our credit card payments. This enables a customer to order the copies, I guess versus having to come in, especially if they're out of town. They're having to order, you know, birth certificate for their college kid to try to get in or a death. This has helped them from writing us a letter and closing a money order. There was no charge to the county, and they confirm all the credit card information and they do background checks. And we get a request, and that's encrypted as well. So this has been a great, great asset to that area. On passports, like I said, we just started in December 2017. And had to this date, which was Friday, we have reviewed 260 applications, provided 171 photos, for a total revenue of $82.10. So, and also training is every year is mandatory for the agents and the acceptance facility. Now, I know when we talked, I guess on Halloween, when we were going over all this, one of you had indicated that you were interested about the security with Logan Systems, which is of course my computer vendor. And this is just a little bit of what they do and what they have kind of behind the scenes. They maintain a digital copy of our data. There's a backup of all the databases made each night. Images are also maintained. We have images, some are redacted, which means social security numbers are taken off those documents, and some are not redacted. So I have to keep two databases. So it's very important that they don't get mingled, they don't get out to the web or anything like that. So if there was a disaster, they would be able to recreate those two databases without, you know, I guess putting all that information on the web. They provide all the hardware that I have up there. I have no county computers except for four tax computers, and that's it. Everything else is managed by Logan. They keep new hardware in their office. They're just in Greensboro so they can remotely access in and help us out, or they're just two hours away to help us get back on if we go down for any reason. You know, every disaster is different. You know, they are ready to help us. You know, if we have to get relocated to a temporary location, then they're ready to help us and assist us. They have an estimated time of being up 24 to 72 hours after a disaster. So I'm very happy about that. With the recent ransomware attacks in Mecklenburg, and I don't know, recently in Davidson, I just want to let you know that we are maintained on a separate network. We do not, we're not on the county network at all. We have our own server in our server room that's in-house. Nothing touches any of the county networks. And what he described to me, it's a DMZ network. Even all the marriages that are coming in electronically, the real estate documents and so forth, it's all encrypted before it gets to us, and there's two or three firewalls before it hits our system. So I feel pretty good. I'm not saying we wouldn't, but I think the protection is there, and they strive very hard to keep it that way. And I've expressed my concern, especially when these two ransomware attacks happened and pretty close. This might be hard to see on the screen, but this is kind of just some information that happened in 2017. This just shows you that we did 59,696 actual transactions, which resulted in 79,404 quantity of those transactions, and which brought in 5.532 million. Those are all broken down. That's how our system is coded. You've got marriages, and you can see what we bring in on our copy account, Platts, our maps. And then, of course, the passport had just started in December. So those are, that's kind of a good indication of what our numbers are and how many we do and, you know, how much we do during the The recent history, I know, on working on this PowerPoint, it kind of was to tell where we, you know, what has helped in the last couple of years. We've been in our renovated space for about 10 years, and in order for us to be in the space that we are now, it allowed us to get all our books out of the dungeon, so to speak, and they were just boxed up, to actually put them on the shelf, start preserving them, start putting them together. That way, everything's together because the staff and myself are constantly going back and forth downstairs to get books. So the, when we moved into that space, that was such a big relief that everything finally was all in one area, and we could access it. The automation fund, I can't say enough about it, has allowed our office to move from the manual era to the electronic world. We're just able to save time and money on both sides of the counter. It's just, we depended so much on copiers and stamps and equipment that there's just no way I can describe the amount of time that this has freed up staff to do what they need to do to concentrate on their work, to be able to really assist a customer, and I guess actually go to lunch for once. We've tried, you know, various ways in to make sure that we're very cost-efficient without jeopardizing customer service. Because there's no way we could keep the level of service that we do now if we were still manual. There's just, I would have to have probably 25 people up there. It just, we couldn't do it with how, with what we had. We, you know, and of course, the other things, we used to spend so much money on postage and office supplies for mailings and copy paper for different functions that we were able to cut those expenses down a tremendous amount. You know, we've scanned all our military discharges. Everything in the office is scanned in, and we were able to install kiosks in there to help customers. This is, like I said, the true benefit of the automation fund and its intent. And we also keep the ongoing preservation of the marriage license. I welcome anybody to come up there. And the birth certificates, to look, they're amazing. I can't believe the work that they've done. You can actually read the information. They've started working on some real estate books. Book One is just, like I said, you can't put a price tag on it because you can't duplicate that. Previous board decisions, of course, like I said, the automation fund, you're preserving the history of the county, and you can't put a price tag on it, and this information can't be found anywhere else. The new office space was crucial. We were running out of space. Education for staff is very important. I set goals for them because they were really never allowed to attend workshops or conferences. So it's very important that they're educated as well and for the county. Some of the major initiatives, I know I've talked to Ms. Cotto. I'm requesting a part-time position in a new budget year. I have someone who's on maternity leave and is coming back, but I'd like to get her to come back part-time, and that's what she wants to. So I'd rather have her come back than totally lose her at all. So I would like to request that. The other thing is, trying to handle these passports, it's kind of grown, I just, you didn't know how it was going to take off, and it's really grown a lot. Trying to reconfigure some areas in the office because we have some dead space that we could really use for these passports. Currently, we have one area, and as you know, if you're a family and you're bringing kids, they got to come with you. So it would be nice to be able to have an area that we can handle more than one family at a time. So I figured, I talked to, I think, Michael James and Dean Glenn about a minimal renovation, just putting up some walls and making us expand our work area that right now is not being used. So I think, hopefully, that's a good initiative because, as you can tell, we are helping a lot of people in the passport area. The compensation study, I know you all haven't gotten a review of that, but that's something that I'm glad that we're looking at. I'm a little concerned that the starting pay for a registered deeds deputy one, it takes six months to a year to get somebody trained. And I feel that the starting pay of $12.93 an hour is not going to attract the people that I need to really have in that office. I just, I'm glad we're looking at it, and I know this is something that you all are viewing it, but it is a concern, and I think it does need to be looked at. Continuing the preservation and repining of books. And some of the master plan updates, of course, is the renovation, if agreed to, for the passport facility. Continue to send staff for ongoing training and changes made by the legislation because they all have certifications that they need to keep. Electronically record Platts. We're ready to do that as soon as we get a surveyor able to do it. And this will also help streamline the tax office, the inspections and all of that. So we're very excited. We're ready to go. We've just got to get a willing and able surveyor to do that. But I think it would be a good beneficial thing for the county. Have what I called in the real estate, a rekey availability in our vital records. It just improves the index input. We're also working on a, streamlining the process for the tax office to receive images to save time and money in both departments. Right now, they come over to our office, they print out everything, and they go back. So it's kind of, they're paying for money, and then they've got somebody time-wise sitting over there. So my vendor, Logan Systems, myself, and I know I've been working with Chris Larsup on the, trying to streamline the process so it helps them and they can get their information even faster. And then also, you know, continue the preservation. And we have some indexed books that are used on a daily basis that are in need of repair now because they're just used constantly. The pages are kind of tearing off on the ends, then some of your names are running off. So. Demands of the service area, like I said, in the real estate area is to constant go into this electronic, full electronic world. We just have to be ready and make sure we have space in the cloud and our servers to handle all these records that are coming up, and, you know, that will be electronically transmitted. Vital records, they always have a kind of funny situation because they have to deal with Raleigh so much, and we all know Raleigh is not on the technology. and we all know Raleigh is not on the technology advancement. So, a lot of times, they're, they're kind of tied down or they'll throw out a system and they've got to train and learn it and then they'll go back to something else and they switch and they switch and it's, it's a lot of patience. They're trying very hard and we're trying to be their guinea pig and help them as well, but that's, that's a demand on that area because it's always changing. And then, like all of us, we just have to prepare what the legislation is going to hit us with. We try to be upfront and I told Jeff that I got assigned to be the legislative co-chair of my association. So, I'm hoping that relationship, I'll kind of get some in, you know, into the knowledge of what they're thinking about and kind of, hey, this is not going to work or this is a good idea. So, hopefully, that'll help representing Union County. The only really mandate that we have is that we have to have all our records onto the permanent index, which all that means is put out to the public viewing. It has to be done within 30 days. We've only, I almost missed that one time and that was right after I got elected because I came in and we were six months worth of mail behind. So, we got it all up to date and haven't seen anywhere that close. It usually takes us about, I guess, seven to 10 days to get everything fully indexed. It just depends on what comes through and how voluminous it is. But we're very conscious of that and always trying to get that done correctly. All right? Any of your feedback or questions? Yes?
You mentioned the young lady that's out of maternity leave. You said you wanted a half a head count. Are you going to be net zero or net, the one head count that the lady on maternity leave represents? Are you asking for additional above that?
She's asking for an additional part-time person.
Because when she leaves, her full time comes open. But I'd like, I would like to work with her and let her come back part-time because of her situation and it would be nice to have a part-time person to follow back on.
And the employee actually requested part-time.
Yes, and she did, she did. Because I was trying to work with her. I understand her situation and I'm just trying to, you know, keep her if I can.
Thank you. Chris, did I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there a plan for the, for your system, for the full system to be viewed for deeds of trust, given the fact we're going to go to e-recording? And I understand your reasons behind not doing it and I don't necessarily disagree with you. But, you know, how are people handling that when they're doing e-recordings about being able to update?
Well, you see, it's 55%. I mean, it blows my mind that...
Yeah, but I think that's incredibly dangerous for title attorney.
Oh, I agree. I'm a paralegal. I can't believe some of these things that come through. Their sales, their transfers, they're not just notices and, I mean, they're... I guess there was some piece of land that was sold, I think it was Allback or something, they did something. I mean, it was a $13,000 deed thing that come through and I'm like, is there somebody updating title here? But, I mean, I'm very torn at that because as you can, if you go back to the slide where it has the, yeah, this one right here, if you see where it says like, where is it? 808 copy account, the $65,948 that we bring in for people that come in and do searches. That's, that's kind of a hard thing. If I was to put everything out on the internet, you get everybody from India to the guy in Charlotte, to the guy in Asheville. I mean, I, you know, to me, I just, I have a hard time with that because you're taking away people's business. You know, I used to be in that world, even though I worked for a firm, but all those freelance paralegals, yeah, we get it a lot, but we do electronically record. I mean, we're over half now. I don't know what kind of protection these people have gotten now. I don't, I mean, maybe they have somebody in-house that updates. I don't know, I don't see them. But, that's, that's the kind of, I guess I'm very torn because a lot of people don't want their information online. I mean, I hear it, we hear it. And then we hear from the Realtor who says, "Well, I don't know why you don't have yourself online. I can't pull restrictions." Well, she's only out because she's doing her job, but the John Doe of the group, they don't want their information out there. It's just, it's just this constant back and forth. And until, you know, North Carolina mandates it or whatever, I mean, we've taken socials off, but still, that information's out there. But, yeah, I don't know. It's mind-blowing to me. Because you and I kind of do it like the old-fashioned way.
Thank you, sir.
No, I think we do it the right way, but, you know, it's, that's, it's a different world now. It's the gratification.
I should ask you another question. Chris, I want to thank you for taking on the passport. So, it's very difficult to get a passport, same as in the serious. So, thank you for doing that. We needed a place in New York to get that done.
Yeah. It's been good. We've got a lot of very positive feedback. So, I'm hoping it will be a very good outreach for the county.
We certainly appreciate the update and the progress you're making.
All right, well, thanks.
Next?
Next.
We need a minute.
Yeah, I think I told them.
We'll take five minutes recess.
Okay, thank you. We'll get him out here. Okay.
Commissioners, I believe it's on March 26th, we are bringing to you preliminary information as it relates to capital improvement projects that have been identified throughout the county for you all to give us some input as it relates to where those projects fall and while we provide you with some funding strategy. And that's a special meeting that we have set up, I believe, that starts at 3:00. In light of that, one of the topics that has probably been discussed since the mid-2000s has been the 4-H Pavilion. I know since I joined the county in 2010 as the manager, this has been a topic of discussion a number of times and we have recently gone through a master plan update and working with the agricultural committee. And I will turn it over to Jeff Caton, who will do an introduction and turn it over to our consultant, Ison.
Yes, thank you. So, as Ms. Cotto said, this is a project that has been discussed for a number of years and we went through a preliminary process back in 2014 to do an assessment of this particular project to determine its validity and viability here in Union County. And from that feasibility study that was done, we brought on board Bullock Smith, who does these type of projects all over the country, very experienced group. Curtis Katron, who is with us today, is the representative from Bullock Smith. He has been with us for the last four or five months as we've gone through a planning process that's involved meeting with stakeholders, meeting with a variety of different user groups, people in the community to get feedback and start developing program of work. Curtis is going to share some of that with you today and share some of the results. This that you're going to see today is a master plan. So, it is a conceptual, kind of high level. The next phase we would move into would be a design development portion of it where you get into a lot more detail. But this will give you a very good overview of program of work. We've got some pricing that we'll include in that, but again, those are very high level. There's some more detailed engineering work that will need to be done in order to be able to get to a more fine-tuned amount, especially for some of the infrastructure improvements that would be needed for the two sites that we're looking at today. I'd also like to introduce Brad Hargit, who's the chair of our ag advisory board, has been for some time, has been actively involved in this process as well, provided us with great input and also collected a number of the stakeholders in the community that we needed to hear from. So, we're glad to have Mr. Hargit with us today. So, if you could, Curtis, if you could come up and do the presentation for us of what you found and if at any point you have any questions that you'd like to ask of Curtis or myself or Brad, we'd be more than happy to entertain those or if you want to say those questions to the end. So, Curtis?
Thank you. Great introduction, appreciate that. Stayed some time with us there. A little bit about what the scope was on this particular project. We are an architectural and planning firm based out of Tennessee and we do specialize in agricultural facilities, mass attendance facilities. So, there's arenas and fairgrounds and agricultural centers. We do research projects for the University of Tennessee. So, we have a very broad agricultural experience for an architectural firm that specializes in this type of planning all over the country. So, when we were brought in, we're looking at this more from a site usage and building layout and programmatic needs for the facility. So, we took the information that was given to us and went through a process, which I'm going to go over to begin with here, in a four-step process. And that first part was where we did the kickoff meeting and all of the interviews with everyone and we began developing a building program with square footages and the needs that were included in there. And then, from that, we developed, and we were charged with looking at a couple of county sites, county-owned sites as a cost-savings measure so that property would not have to be purchased and to see what the impact and availability of the developable area of those sites were. And we actually grew it to three different sites. We came up with alternative development concept plans, rolled one of the sites out automatically, refined that to a preferred layout on the two sites that remain because there's some problems with each one of them, although there is one that we are recommending because of the shape of the site. And then, here we are with the final presentation. Again, this is a big picture. We did not have a civil engineer involved with this during the process. So, there's no engineering involved, there's no surveys. I mean, this is based off of data available from the county. So, these initial sites we looked at, this is the Ag Center site right here. There's a small parcel next to it, fronting on Preston Road. And then, there's additional property in the back that in the current master plan is shown as a festival area, I believe is what it's called, picnic festival area that we looked at. And then, we added the site on Summerlin Dairy Road because it was a potential, currently owned as part of all of this county property, it was another site we could look at. And so, that's what we did in this process. The revenue site turned out to be the Preston Road site because of its shape, configuration, accessibility. It's easy to get to. Because it's a very good rectangular shape, we could do a variety of layouts. And knowing that the program that we developed to come up with this master plan is going to be refined by whatever architect works on the project in the future and the site layout will be refined as the user groups are refocused on the project and really boil down to what has to happen on the site. It will be improved as that process goes through, but we know it will fit a variety of shapes. The site that went out, this front site went out because it was too small. We could fit the buildings, but no parking. And so, we had a discussion about shared parking and we realized the existing facility needs more parking than it has. The events at both locations would be occurring the same days, so you can't share parking when neither of them can fit the parking that needs to be there. So, we just pulled it off. And in fact, because of the size of this one and it not being quite as large as the Summerlin Dairy Road site, we're proposing to use that property as some of the overflow parking because there will be a few events a year that may need to have that extra overflow parking. The reason why we're using this as alternative site, what we do like about it is it has close approximation to the existing Ag Center without having to go around, all the way around the site to get to it. There's a lot of traffic conflicts on this site. There's only one way to get to the site and you have to drive by. And again, if this is very busy with an event and we're loading in trailers pulling livestock or horses or whatever or just guests coming in, there's just a lot of conflict that could potentially go there. We have a crossing over a floodplain creek. It took a long time to get that crossing. We don't foresee adding an alternate location within the scope of what this project can afford. Oh, and another thing is that we do know that this is a private road. Preston Road is a private road and it is not in the best shape for a lot of traffic and this intersection is a concern. And we suspect there'd have to be a sizable amount of money used to upgrade, possibly signalize, certainly add additional lanes to 74 up here, which are, it is 74, right? You have a 74 up here. That will have to happen in order for the traffic to be able to come and go. So, that was another major disadvantage of that site. So, moving on into the program, I think in everyone's mind as we came in, the project was a combination of sort of a multipurpose barn and a covered ring, depending on who I spoke to. In reality, for this type of facility, what we see across the country is a covered ring that's supported by multipurpose barns. And that the multipurpose barns are very important. In fact, most places will start with the barns in an open uncovered ring and then cover the ring at a later date. In fact, that is what we're recommending as a way to phase in the full project. So, as I go into the actual master plan and we show three phases of development for both sites, one of the first things we do is we say, build a multipurpose barn and two open rings. One of them will, in the future, will be the warm-up ring. And so, we'll cover one of the two rings. The other thing is, it seems like all of our clients always want to add another barn at some point. So, we always plan for at least one more barn. And the sites we're looking at can accommodate the extra barns. So, let's plan for it and let's don't put anything else in that location that would create problems for us in the future. We developed some concepts for the buildings based off of our interviews. We sized them. The point is that they are multipurpose facilities. What you're looking at, first of all, is this multipurpose barn. It is clear span to a center island that also has support beams in it so that we can run water and water down for use for the different stalls. What you're looking at is a 10 by 10 configuration, which is the standard of the industry. You can do 10 by 12 and 12 by 12, but if you do the square footage cost, a 10 by 10, which is 100 square feet versus a 12 by 12, which is 144 square feet per stall, it makes more sense most of the time to go with the 10 by 10. And for larger animals, you can remove a center 10 and make it a 10 by 20. Now, that's more detail than you want to hear right now, but you need to understand there's a lot of things going on here. We have to figure out how to lay out six by six pins within the same space. How do we get water to it? How do we get electricity to it? And so, this facility is meeting the needs that were requested by the user groups. And so, it can be configured different ways. We can remove pins, the larger pins, and put smaller ones in. We can remove them and make it an open space. We can put show rings in. That is the whole point of being multipurpose so that we can make it flexible. Not so flexible that no one wants to use it, but flexible enough to have different types of events in them. One of the things that we were programming, or were asked to program in was the use of the existing Ag Center for meeting space. If we use the Summerlin Dairy Road site, we'll have to create a little better meeting space than would otherwise be on the barn. I'll show you. So, what you're seeing here is for the Summerlin Dairy, we have a little out meeting building. Now, this meeting space, which could be a large space, it can be subdivided into smaller spaces, is probably a Class C meeting space. And what I mean by that is it has a concrete floor rather than carpet in it. It's not a high-end space. The high-end space is still over at the Ag Center. But because it would take too much time to move people between this building and the Ag Center on the Summerlin Dairy site, we are proposing that this space be provided. We're providing some meeting space also on the, and this is an elevation of it, on the multipurpose barn, which is the same configuration in the stall area, but it has just a large open space and it's sort of an entry, assembly space before you go into the actual barn. In both these barns, the public entrance is on this side and all services on the other three sides. So, we keep our service and our guests completely separate. So, we went through this process and I'm going on and on about it and I can tell you a lot more about it. I want, I won't. a lot more about it, I won't, I won't. And then we worked on the show pavilion, ring-sized for a variety of uses, it can be subdivided for even more uses. The total number of seats, the 2,600 target, was requested for a range of 25,000 to 3,000. We felt 2,600 fit in there well, and provides all the other spaces within the program that I showed you before. So all of this leads to the actual master plans. So let me run on to those, so that you can see them. This is the Summerlin Dairy site, and the general configuration for all of them is this. You have, and if you point into the site, you have the public area on one side, you have the service area on the other. For the buildings, you have the arena with a public entrance and a service side, for the barns, a public side and a service side. And then the services, where you're moving animals in the background, so there's no conflict with pedestrians and animals. So we're all about safety in these layouts. This is a well-worn, proven layout, and we have it on facilities all over the country, and it works very well. And we're not the only ones who use it, I mean, many firms use this type of layout. So what you're seeing is the full proposed master plan, including a future barn location that's identified on this. For the, and this is a potential view of what it could look like if you're approaching it from the west. For the Ag Center site, again, the Ag Center is up here, and you drive down to the cul-de-sac and on through it, and come into the site, same type of configuration, where there's a public side with overflow parking over here, and then there's the service side on the backside. The tricky part about this site is that we're having to squeeze in things and orient them in interesting ways, but squeeze them in, and so the parking's scattered, it's not very direct. Some of the overflow parking is a little bit remote back here, and then again, even more overflow parking, where you see, down here, it says that we should provide about 1050 total overflow spaces, but we're showing 1025, so we're sending that a few more somewhere up over here, maybe more depending on the event. This site, again, it has that assembly space in it, rather than a meeting space, and it's assuming that we could use meeting space in the Ag Center with it. But there's some problems with both sites. This site is about traffic, getting to it, and roadway improvements, which can be significant costs. We don't know what those are because we're not civil engineers or traffic engineers. The potential problem with this site is that there's no sewer access. The closest sewer is to run a line a little over 6,000 linear feet, flow downhill flow to, basically to the cul-de-sac. And that has a cost associated with it, and thankfully, the county worked with us to come up with a range of costs for that, so we'll show that in that, that's what you see on the budget when you look at the budget. And the potential view for this one when you go in would be something like that, just to show you an idea of some general agricultural-style architecture. So magnitude of cost, and that's what we're really trying to get across to you. Phase one, the first part of construction is highlighted, where we would build the multipurpose barn and the meeting space, and the two rings, and some of the parking now, grade the entire site, and provide the sanitary sewer service. And that sanitary sewer cost is somewhere in the 880 to 1.5 million, so we took just the median cost of it, or middle cost of it, and added it into the total cost to come up with a first phase of about 4.5 million. Numbers rounded up, 10% contingency, you know, high, high view looking down at this, with no great detail, just based off of our experience and the cost of construction in this area. As an alternative site, should we choose, I'm sorry, there's other phases associated with that, including the covering of the ring and the future construction, and then finally, we should just show a barn as some long-term future phase in today's dollars. As an alternative for the site over by the Ag Center, this three, I don't want this $3 million number to be misleading because it does not include roadway costs that could very easily exceed the $1 million number that we were showing for the sewer, because we don't know what the scope is. It's going to require an engineering study to determine what needs to be done and how much it's going to cost. But we think it is a substantial cost. And again, the layout configuration of this was just a little hard to work with, and our biggest problem is that there is only one point of access, and it comes through the Ag Center site, where on, sorry, wrong button, on the Summerlin Dairy site, we have two points of access, because you can access it from two directions, and we can have two different entry points. It could even be broken down to guests versus the participants. So there's just a lot of things about this site that are compelling to us as designers and as planners to use, to prefer this site. So that, in a very quick nutshell, is it. I'm happy to talk in way too much detail about any of it if you'd like to, or if you have any questions or anything you'd like to clarify on this.
Question on the Summerlin site, was there any roadwork? I mean, that's a two-lane road, right?
There will have to be some roadwork, they'll have to probably add turn lanes, possibly a center turn lane. Traffic is not very heavy, as I understand it, but again, I'm not a traffic engineer. We know there will have to be some improvements on it as well, but nothing compared to the amount of work that will have to occur on 74, including a potential signalization on 74.
I've spoken to some of our school board representatives, because of the nature of this for the Future Farmers of America, FFAs, and some of the agriculture education that they have in schools, there's maybe a partnership potential that would also include some help with road funding. I think that some of our staff may have been checking into that. There's a, there's a new, some new laws that are so new that's hard to determine exactly what they will and won't do. But there is some potential, maybe we could get some help with that road.
For this road or either road?
Either road.
Okay. That's, that's the note.
What's the closest facility of this magnitude to this area?
That was actually, I think, identified in the study that was provided, but I don't remember it this time, I'm sorry.
That was brought up in our discussions. One of the key uses for this facility would be the 4H horse shed. They used to hold that event at Lata Flamation Park, which has since been sold and leased and closed down. There is a facility, I'm sure you're aware of, the Carveris County facility, but I've been told by that group it's not, it's not usable. The closest one that I'm aware of is the Lumberton facility down on the 74 east.
And I guess, I'm just trying to determine the scope as to the usage in, you know, these other facilities, I mean, what are their usage, what does their usage look like? Are they being regularly used?
We could certainly get that information as far as Lumberton's concerned, or Carveris County for that, as far as that goes. I mean, I'm familiar with a number of facilities similar to this, that are booked every weekend for dog shows, horse shows, equipment shows, gun and knife shows, list goes on and on in terms of potential. The other, the other point I think is important to make is that Jeff included the Parks and Rec folks and their voucher board in this discussion, and it has potential for things like outdoor concerts, and things like that.
Possibly graduations.
I think we're spending $100,000 a year in graduations out of town.
That's my understanding, I guess, we might as well ask that question, there had been some discussion about what would it take to improve the covered arena to the point that it could be air-conditioned and closed, and I'll let you expand on that.
Yeah, we took a look at that, and it's, you don't just put walls and air-conditioning these, it's a slightly different type of construction, because you have to, it has to be designed for the heat loss and heat gain, it has to be sealed a little bit differently so that you don't have water, you know, condensation and development, and you have to treat sound differently because you have to do sound abatement. So there's a lot of costs that start creeping in on you, and I can't remember right off the bat with the, we actually did a number, ran a number on it, and I cannot remember what the number was.
It was 6.5.
About what?
6.5.
6.5?
6.5 is 7.
6.5, 6.5 million additional?
Additional or total?
Total. That was total.
I think 2.4.
2.4, 2.4.
2.4, 6.5 or 7.
Right. Another thing that, just to point this out, that some of you have may have seen these, and before, the soft cost and contingency number, we had these, we had everything lined up and costed out, and then the soft cost and contingency were added at the end, and what we've done is we've added them in at each level so that we can move the numbers around a little bit easier, if that makes sense. So where the covered arena before showed up at a, like a 2.4 number, something like that, now shows up as 2.7, it's the same number, it just, it was easier to move the numbers back and forth as we were discussing the phasing. So I just wanted to make sure I clarified that for some of you.
When you talk about multiple uses, the covered arena is not concrete, right?
The bleachers are either fixed, or maybe some are retractable on a concrete base, you have concrete, you'll have concrete coming in and around the ring, and then the ring has got a fencing system around it, and it is a footing mix in it. And what you do with these is you roll these footing mixes till they're compacted very hard, I mean, hard enough to walk on in heels, you know, if a lady chose to do that. But typically, what we do is, it gets rolled hard, and then carpeting systems are put down onto it, which are, you know, they just go together, and then it becomes a working But the rest of it is concrete around.
I'm just trying to understand the arena and alternate uses for it. Concerts we'll watch and backstage bands.
And if I go, if you would like, I can go all the way back to the programming part of it. The number of seats in there was, the number that I showed you, the 2,600, we can add additional over 4,000 on the floor if it's rolled out and chairs are set up to put a concert in there. And actually, you're putting more on the floor, but we had to take some off on the edges because the stage blocks the view, and so you don't sell those seats. And that's actually, a concert, which would be your densest, most dense possible use, is what we base the total overflow parking on, and that's the very rare event that you need to have the extra long parking. And that's what, when we say overflow, that's what's creating that overflow parking at particular event. So, you know, if you want to have a graduation, you roll it out, you get your carpet down, you set your seats up for your students in the middle, and set the stage and podium down there, and then the families and guests sit up in the bleachers. That's one way to do it. The thing about this, the space for this, both the arena space and the, this meeting space, it is a different quality, it attracts a different use, it's not competing with anyone else really, because in terms of like, well, like what's going on at the Ag facility, the Ag Center for example, because it's a nice conference space as opposed to a simple meeting space. So it adds to the flexibility, it adds to cost options for users, it gives more places for groups like the 4H to meet on a regular basis.
And Brian, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I know that you have sat through, I think, a lot of the stakeholder meetings, if I'm not incorrect, I didn't know if you had anything that you may want to add.
We've had a very diverse group through all the stakeholder meetings, and we've had a lot of positive, some negative input, and that all goes together to create a more positive master plan, as Curtis has brought back to us. At this point in time, with the process that's taking place, everyone that's involved in the ongoing stakeholders meetings are positive, was moving forward with the product that Curtis and his partners brought back to us.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Helms, I did interrupt.
Well, I sat into one of your presentations about three weeks ago, ballpark, three, four weeks ago, and the total number was roughly 6.5 million then, it's 9.4 now. Help me understand the delta.
The delta is, let's see if I can remember what all the delta was. There are things that have been added in there, like the RV hookups were added in there as an allowance. The, some of the site allowance was rolled up a little bit, we added more at the Phase Three area, because we felt like there may be additional work that needs to be done, so it's just planning for cost, for site improvements or repair by the time, if Phase Three ever happens. So if you start looking at the numbers, if you compare them line to line, the big things have not changed. We've not changed the cost of the buildings, we've not changed the majority of the site cost, we added a little bit at the end of it on the Phase Three, but broke it up mostly between Phase One and Phase Two, and...
The largest portion, Commissioner, was the infrastructure cost, the sewer estimate that was provided for the Summerlin Dairy site, was a substantial part of that variance.
Maybe that extra barn?
I'm sorry, sir?
Maybe that extra barn too?
Yeah, the extra barn was added in at the end, and it's the Phase Three that adds more, the barn was not included, I believe, the second one I don't think was included in the original cost. And again, that is just long-term planning that may or may not happen. One of the things we talked about during the process was that, in a master plan, the master plan is always a, it's not fixed, it's a living, breathing thing, and so the group needs to be meeting on a regular annual basis to look at minor changes, and every five or six years, they need to really sit down and talk about if their programs changed, if their goals have changed, and adjust the master plan to match those new goals that are there. So the long-term planning, again, is just to create placeholders. What we don't want to have happen is, knowing that there's a good potential that there will be a future barn, we feel there is, even though it may not be something that's perceived by the group yet, we feel that there's a good potential for it. What we don't want to have happen is someone decide, well, we have room to put building X on this side, so let's just put it here next to the barn, and then suddenly, we blocked a future barn in a location that was better, because the barns need to be close together because of their usage, they need to be in the same zone, and access to the arena, and we just hurt ourselves. And so that's what we're trying to be careful of.
Well, the comments by the 4H horse folks was that the multipurpose barn with the stalls is critical. They can deal with the open arena to begin with, to have their district horse sheds. But without, without covered stalls, it's an impossibility, so that's...
Yes, that was, and that's what we hear everywhere we go, everyone's like, get us the stalls, give us a ring, and we'll get it covered immediately. And that's how everyone looks at it, in terms of user groups.
Any other questions? Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Mark here?
I'm going to chase everybody down.
We're running way ahead of schedule.
I'm not going to call recess until you find it. I'm not going to call recess till you find it.
Michael?
Yes, Michael.
He needs a few minutes.
Time to recess.
Sorry about that, Mr. Watson?
It's okay. We didn't have to change it every year or something.
Commissioners, as you recall, we probably started this discussion on compensation and classification study about a year ago, when we were in the budget process for this present fiscal year. And at that point in time, we noted that it had been over 20 years since this organization had taken on any kind of study, and looking at where our positions were compared to the local market. And part of the process we went through is establishing a compensation mission statement that was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, which speaks to fair, market-competitive compensation that attracts, retains, and rewards qualified and highly engaged employees dedicated to delivering quality service to the community. And the reason I lay that kind of as the foundation, because that really was the mission that was established, and we embarked upon this, that and the guiding principles that were also adopted by the Board of County Commissioners quite some time ago. This afternoon, you're going to hear from Michael James, you're going to hear from Nancy Berkeley, our consultant, and you're also going to hear from Mark Watson. And they're going to talk about different components of the study, but I think one thing that's very important for the board to be aware of, that this was a very inclusive process. It started off initially with the leadership team, we did employee focus groups, we did individual meetings with employees, we put a presentation out on County Connect so that they were aware, we had frequently asked questions, and we also engaged the division directors and the executive directors as part of this whole process. Once the survey results were obtained from our consultants, we then started talking about the implementation strategy, and that's really where Mark is going to spend a bit of time today. And we really looked at our organization and said, there really are three components of this implementation. One is where are we compared to the market? Second was, we are a performance-based organization, and we have been very strong in our performance-based system for at least the last five years, which is somewhat unique in local government. And then the last component was also recognizing positions of people and employees, and how long they had been within their classification. So it really was a marriage of where we are in the market, our high performing and our overall employees, and where they're performing within the organization over a sustained period of time, and then how long have they been with the organization? Because I think all three of those components are very important. So those are the pieces that you're going to be hearing about today. We hope at the end of the presentation that you will be comfortable in giving us direction as to moving forward with implementation, but certainly if you have additional questions as we go through this process, we are more than happy to answer them. So with that, I will turn it over to Michael.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to cut this slide on over here.
If you do, we cannot see it on the internet.
Oh, okay.
So we can see it better.
We can see it better if this light is off?
On, if it's on.
If it's on, yes.
Okay. We've got a lot of employees watching this, we're going to make sure they can see. All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Cindy said everything wonderfully that I was going to...
No, 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 no. I love the slide, I didn't take off.
So, but, I mean, yeah, one thing I wanted to say is I did want to thank staff and the HR team, Kimberly, Dawn, Julie, Dorothy, and Mark, they did a wonderful job, spent hours and hours coming up with what you'll see today, and it took a lot of time to find a implementation option that was financially responsible, that met the needs of the organization, and something we said that the board, we felt that the board could support and could get behind. So I appreciate their work, I appreciate staff and the organization being in orientation meetings, giving us feedback to the consultants, to staff, and helping us develop what we have today, so we appreciate their work. So today, what we're going to do, I'm going to provide a brief overview of our objectives, talk about our mission statement and guiding principles. Nancy Berkeley, who you've met before, is the project manager with Evergreen Solutions, she's going to provide some detail on the methodology. Some you've heard before, but just a refresher on what this process looks like, she's going to go through the classification review process and the compensation survey process, talk about what the process is and what the results were that they found. And the bulk of our presentation today is Mr. Watson's going to come up and talk about and walk you through the implementation recommendation in detail, so you all understand what we're proposing to the board. We're going to talk about the employee investment, what that budget impact number is, and what it does for the organization, and at the end, they give them some board discussion and consideration of the recommendation. So an overview of the objective, what we wanted to do when we first came to you guys is we wanted to do this study to make sure that our compensation classification system is competitive, it's equitable, it promotes employee engagement, and it focuses on performance excellence. And as you'll see through this presentation, we are making sure that we are competitive in the market, that we can attract and retain quality employees, and that we're also focused intently on the performance of those employees as a means for those to achieve wage, for them to achieve wage growth within our system. So again, what this does, we're looking to attract or retract, excuse me, attract and retain highly qualified employees by understanding our labor market. One of the big aspects of this project was for us to understand where we are competitive and where we're not competitive, and who do we compete with for employees, which was a big piece of this process. We wanted to create a compensation structure that is based upon knowing that true labor market value, and as you'll see throughout the presentation, we want to incentivize performance and allow our employees to empower themselves to gain wage growth through their performance and to take charge of that. We want to make certain through our classification review process that our job descriptions accurately reflect what our employees do. As time goes on and employees may have positioned a long time, they may have taken our additional responsibilities, and their job description does not reflect that. So through this process, we want to make sure that their classifications are correct and they're being compensated for the work that they're doing. And lastly, through this process and what we'll do moving forward, we're wanting to provide a sustainable foundation for the future for our compensation structure. A lot of mechanics go into doing that, but we know that looking forward, we're setting our organization up for success as we move forward. So again, Cindy mentioned this, this document was very, very important to us as a project team, as a consultant, this really led everything that we do. Everything that you're going to see today was measured against the mission statement and the guiding principles that the board voted on and approved at a last meeting. So you'll see a lot of familiar themes through this presentation, but it all goes back to making sure that what we have presented to the board reflects that mission statement and reflects those guiding principles. So Nancy, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Hello again, I'm Nancy Berkeley with Evergreen Solutions. Again, Evergreen Solutions is based in Tallahassee, Florida, so just to remind you where we're located. Really just going to pick up, if you will, but I'll be happy to kind of backtrack a little bit of where we, where the tasks that we completed since the last time. I was here, I talked a bit more about the broader picture of the study itself, how we conducted something called Employee Outreach, talked with individuals, asked employees to complete something called a JAT, which is a job assessment tool, so that we could understand and analyze every job that was being conducted, every work that was being performed. So since the time I was here before, what we've done is analyzed all of that data, analyzed the internal equity, which is the JATs, job assessment tools from everybody, the classification, came up with recommendations for classifications, and analyzed all of the market data, and developed a new pay structure that's at-market, again, going along with your compensation philosophy. Assigned each classification to a pay grade range. When we do these studies, it's important to note that we don't just take, here's overall, how ahead, behind, whatever competitive you are with the market, and let's just take every position and slot them exactly at that point, ahead or behind, because that might put some more ahead or more behind than they should be. So we individually, based on the data from the market and from that JAT internal hierarchy analysis, slot each, each, each classification, so that we're getting them appropriately to, again, to the market, as was mentioned before, and with regard to internal equity. We then also developed, we developed some implementation options for taking that current employees and placing them in the new structure, again, kind of the starting point for what Mark is going to talk about after me, but we did come up with those implementation options as well. This is the one that we, you've done here in the county is a little more refined than the one we had. And then what we're doing, or what we're working on now, is revising the job descriptions. So we take data that we learned or gained, people gave us from the JAT and the Sigriders review, from those job assessment tools, and we'll update and revise the classification descriptions. And, and produce a final report, too. So, very broadly speaking, from our classification recommendations, a couple of things we were looking to try to do was to try to come up with some broad classifications, I mentioned this the last time, in some areas for some job families, clerical administrative, for example. So this is, over to the right, is just a brief little illustration of two levels of that multi-level matrix of admin support specialists. So you could have an admin support specialist 1, brief job summary, admin support specialist 2, brief job summary, minimum education noted here. They could be in any department across the county, and you'd want to expect that at least and minimum, their job summary, the highest level of essential functions would be very similar. Specifically, what they're doing in each department would be different, but you could classify them in this way. So if I'm an admin support specialist 2 in one department, and maybe I'm thinking about, you know, there's nothing available in the current department, but over in some other areas, there's more opportunities, you know, I might want to be an admin support specialist 3 one day, you know, I could kind of know what that would look like. This actually also sort of represents a career ladder, if you will. So you can use these, and we developed some of these matrices for other ones as well as a career ladder, sort of see what that progression would be. We had some, as we call it best practice peers, similar titling, so in some classifications it's just, you know, what is the current market calling a position, what have you, so we made those recommendations as well. Overall, the results for our market survey for, I should have said this down here, it was 96, 92, 96 benchmark classifications that we surveyed, we actually prepared a survey, let me get to 92, I'm sorry, 92 classifications that we surveyed, we created a survey, top survey, sent, gave it, sent it to peer organizations, this is the same peer list that you saw before from us, some of these are what we call comparable, and some of them are more competitive, competitive being more within a distance of traveling from an, for an employee standpoint. All of the data for all of these were adjusted for cost of living. And for the 92 benchmark classifications, all averaged together, some had differentials ahead of the market, some had differentials behind the market. Overall, collectively, one would say that your structure is 1.3 currently percent behind the market for an at-market position, 4.2 at the midpoint, and 6.1 at the maximum. Now, and overall, the average range width from the minimum to the maximum was about 56% for those peers. You currently have a structure that has what we call a constant 50% range spread throughout your whole structure, from the minimum to the, to the maximum, just some data points there. So that's where you are today. So what we did was designed a new structure, I know you can't necessarily read this, but from the range spreads, we designed, this was starting off at 50% range spreads and then increasing, if you can see, goes to 55 and to 60. This is somewhat of a more typical design, there's not absolute rules in this, but a more typical design, probably for an organization your size, to have slightly increasing range spreads as you go up through the, through the ranges. The idea is, as you're going, people are hopefully progressing, some have an opportunity to do so, throughout those ranges to different positions, they would stay probably in those jobs for longer, so the ranges are a little bit wider. 50 to 70% is best practice design for an open-range plan. When I mentioned before that your peers, on average, range spreads were 56%, so we try to stay in that ballpark of what your peers are too. So we wouldn't typically design a plan that's so far different than what your peers have. So we started with 50 and graduated up to 60%. Again, we individually assigned classifications to each one of the grades, and as we call it, with good maintenance, the structure should be, I'll call it good for several years, probably about three years. Now, this doesn't mean that you wouldn't have to maybe make a pay grade change for a particular classification, but the structure itself should be what we call good for about We do what I call the kind of before and after, this is the after, so if we, once we designed that structure, individually slated all the classifications, we said, okay, we were to do that same market survey using the new sliding of classifications, new structure, what have you, where would you, where would that be? And we came, and this is what we have. So 2.7% slightly ahead, 2.3 at the midpoint, and 2% at the maximum. Why can't we make it exact? Because when we're picking the pay ranges, we can't make it exactly on point because you're still picking your pay range. This is good, it's not too far above, and I'd say it probably gives you a little bit more room to make sure that you're good for those three years. Shouldn't have to change it for three years. Point here, the contribution, again, it was already mentioned, and the engagement with the leadership team that I've seen was extremely high, not that you need this accolade from me, but much more work on the comp philosophy, on the involvement from the leadership team, from the, from the HR team here itself, to, to produce, again, to review what we're submitting, critically review it, give us some input back, ask us to look at something again, and the involvement absolutely bar none, more than any I've seen in my five years of doing this work. So, which I would say absolutely, again, is, goes along with, again, your guiding principles and the comp philosophy, which sets the whole stage for making it a very, a, a study and a implementation, if you agree to that implementation, and get very, very positive for not only the county but the employees as well. Questions?
You mentioned good maintenance, define that for me.
Good maintenance is, we see a position that needs to be, that's lack, that all of a sudden we can't recruit or retain, let's examine it, we're going to give you the tools of how to do that, see if it needs to be either reclassified, regraded. Good maintenance to be is regraded, do the due diligence regrade if you need to, reclassify if you need to.
Well, that's something that occurs as needed or as it's identified?
Yes, yes. I would use during 2000 and how IT jobs were just impossible to fill because of the changeover, and so I saw a lot of organizations having to make adjustments at that point in time for that certain classification. So, but as Nancy has indicated, they have given HR those tools so that when they are identified, that we are able to do that internally. We're actually going to give you another automated tool as well, that literally it's like, you mentioned IT, okay, so somebody calls up, you know, records all that information, same thing, comes up with what that, does the same kind of market that we do, and then look at all the data in there, you know, come at all the data in there, you know, come up with a recommended new pay grade if needed or not, if that's the case, maybe.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I would like to point out that, you know, we have done in normal maintenance, I mean, as part of what our, our normal job functions are in HR, and we have had a process in place for quite some time, but what we're gaining out of this is a more formalized structure along with, I want to say, a written procedure to go along that, rather than just a best practice that we've been following. So I look forward to that. So the implementation recommendation. Before I get into the implementation part, I want to take a step back. Nancy mentioned the pay grade chart that we currently have, and the fact that it, it's a cookie cutter from the most entry-level pay grade in our system to the very high, highest pay grade in our system, has a 50 percent spread, and it's been, it's been rather restrictive to work with over time, okay? But it's the same type of pay grade structure that you will find in nearly every local government across the state of North Carolina. It starts at a pay grade, we, we have two-digit numbering system, so it starts at a pay grade pick and it goes through 99, so we have 50 of those pay grades currently in place. With the proposed structure, we will have 38 pay grades. Now, when you go from 50 pay grades in a structure to 38 pay grades in a structure, what is one of the first things that you can imagine will happen? If you've got 400 job classifications in 50 pay grades, and now you, maybe, we, we've reduced the number of classifications, but let's say, for conversation's sake, let's say that's 350 right now in the, in the proposed structure. So you're, you're compacting and you're changing the relationship that people are used to seeing in the pay plan. People that have worked with our current system for a long time may be used to seeing classifications or jobs having a certain relationship to each other. Two pay grade differential, three grade pay differential, one pay grade differential between job A and job B, but people in general have, it, those types of things form percept, is what we form perceptions around, okay? With the new system, those, that, the way those jobs are structured within the pay plan change. Instead of having two pay grades between classification A and B, to, as it is today, maybe there's one pay grade differential. Or maybe, if there's one pay grade differential today, they end up in the same pay class, pay grade classification. So the structure is different from that perspective, and that changes some of the dynamics of what we do and how we make decisions. The other thing that Nancy showed you was, in the new structure, we go from the lower pay grades in the system being a 50 percent spread, and I know that really doesn't probably mean anything to you, but let's just, you know, it's what is called, is called a spread, to a 55 percent spread, to a 60 percent spread, okay? That's not typical of what you would see in local government. Is, am I correct, Nancy, a tiered structure like that? It's becoming more that way.
Yes, it's definitely becoming more.
Yeah, but not...
I'd say it's 50/50, and it's, in larger organizations, you see it more.
Right. But you do see that type of system in the, in the private sector, where you will have a, a pay plan for your administrative and trades jobs. You will have a pay structure or pay plan for your technical and specialty jobs, that's totally different, okay? And you will have a pay plan or pay, pay system for your professional managerial executive jobs. So basically, what the new system does, it stacks, the way I like to think about it, okay, the way I like to describe it, is it stacks those three different type of pay plans on top of each other to create one pay chart for Union County. Now, let me talk about recommendations. Nancy, one of the things that she did after she did her initial evaluation was she presented us with six different proposed implementations, okay? From the very minimal approach to the more complex approach. Very minimal would be, you know, we changed the pay structure, we move, you know, and all of a sudden, we have folks that are being paid below the grade, the minimum of the grade to which they are assigned. So the, at a minimum, we would just adjust those people to the new minimum, okay? That really doesn't do much other than it makes you compliant, okay? Some of the other options are keep people within, if there are, if there's a, if they have a certain position on their current pay grade range today, is we keep them whole and move them into that same position on the new language. That's a little bit difficult to do because we're, again, we're going from 50 grades to 38 grades, and we're doing some other things that are changing the dynamics there. And looking at all of those examples, which are very, are recommendations, which are all very good, we had to ask ourselves, do any of these recommendations go back and deliver what we're, what we've said our mission and our, and our guiding principles are? Do they, do they meet those criteria? Are they getting us where we need to be? So we asked for another implementation, so we call that number seven, all right? And numbers seven looked good. It was getting us to where we needed to be. And so the implementation team sat down with, with county manager, and we got some feedback. And the feedback we've got is it looks really good, however, it doesn't incorporate performance or individual performance levels in the solution at all. Performance is a big part of the mission statement and the guiding principles. Also, as it was pointed out earlier, we have a fairly robust performance evaluation system. And so how do we, how do we get all of these compensation processes working together in this solution? So Cindy gave me the impossible task, and when I left, when I left the conference room table that day, I thought I had been given the impossible task, called the... How do you, how in the world do you take a compensation solution and merge a performance factor into it and have, and have it, one, make sense, two, meet your objectives? And after a lot of discussion with, Michelle contributed, I had a meeting with Ed, some other folks, to talk about it and pick their brains, get ideas about how we could merge performance into this solution, it was, it just became readily apparent how we would do that. And then, once we delved through the calculations, it actually turned out, I thought, better than what, what I expected it to turn out with. So that kind of gets us into this presentation, is this is really solution number eight that we're looking at here. So key elements for the recommendation, and these are very, very important. These are key elements of the mission statement, of the guiding principles, and these are the foundational pieces upon which this implementation is based. Market-based compensation. And you will see that in this solution, everything revolves around the market, okay? We start using terms instead of telling, you know, instead of somebody looking at where they are at in the pay grade range, you know, and then comparing themselves, well, I make this, that person makes that, you know, is that, and then making judgments about whether that's fair or not fair. You know, everybody's got an opinion about whether it's fair, equitable, or whatever. But when you start layering in market, which is the midpoint or the center of the pay range, and you start communicating compensation in terms of a percent of market, what percent is your compensation of market? Then we layer in performance. The, the guiding principles talk about adequate salary growth to market within a reasonable period of time. Some of the other guiding principles talk about competent, for competent and effective employees, for competent people that have rated competent and effective. And you may want to say something about what it means to be competent and effective in our performance system.
It means you, you do every task that is within your job description each and every day to the best of your ability, and that is competent and effective.
So one of, one of the things in our performance evaluation system, if a person does not rate overall competent and effective in their evaluation, we have a, a management plan for them, okay? If, if they cannot get that performance up to an overall competent and effective in their second evaluation cycle, then perhaps this is not a good place for them to be. So that's a fairly nice way of saying that the employees that we have, that, as we talk about this solution set, and we talk about competent and effective employees, these employees have demonstrated, at least in their first seven to 10 years, a minimum, a minimum of sustained competent and effective performance, okay? And then time within classification. Time within classification, there's, there's tenure with the organization. You were originally hired 10 years ago, okay? Two years ago, you took a new job in the organization, and now you're a supervisor over whatever work unit you're in, okay? So your time in classification really is two years ago. Two years ago, you received a, a pay increase presumably for the increased responsibilities that you took on. You were hired in a new classification, so in this solution set, in this implementation, we are looking at time in classification, not how long you've been with the organization, Market-based compensation, as defined by the Society of Human Resource Management, is a market rate, is the amount of compensation that employees could reasonably expect to earn if they left their current job and had to find work. It's what the market is willing to pay for someone with their education, experience, and skill set. To Nancy's point, about, about 50 percent, public sector organizations, well, back in 2012, and this was the most up-to-date information we could find on, on the SHRM website, but even as, as early as 2012, they were reporting 64 percent of organizations were utilizing a market-based salary structure. The organization, and why are we, why are we using market-based compensation or proposing this in the, so heavily in this implementation? So that, number one, the organization knows the value of the compensation in the marketplace, and the employees also know the value of what their compensation should be in the marketplace, and it recognizes that relationship. It also establishes starting salaries, salary progression strategies, and maximum salaries, all based on market rate.
Mark, can I ask?
Sure.
Earlier, you made the statement that market base was the midpoint?
Market, and you have a pay grade with a minimum and a maximum. The, the middle of that range is market. Okay? And then, I'm glad you asked for that clarification. If I had my whiteboard here, I've, I've become famous with my whiteboard, I told, I was told I couldn't use my whiteboard today because it glared on the screen or whatever, okay? But if I had my whiteboard here, you know, I'd show you two, three examples, and, and people perceive pay grade ranges differently, believe it or not. Somebody, some perceive minimum as zero and maximum as 100 percent, and the midpoint is, is 50 percent. In a market-based system, market is 100 percent. It is what the market will pay for that job, okay? What the mark, what the current rate is out there on average, okay? So the minimum in the proposed scale, the minimum ranges anywhere from 77 to 80 percent of market. The maximum is anywhere from 124 to 126 percent of market. Market is always 100 percent, okay? So if a person is being, being paid at their market rate, or they, when we say achieve market, then they're achieving, they're, they're being paid on average what that job is worth in the marketplace. Sustained job performance, okay? We talked a little bit about what competent and effective mean, you'll see how that comes into play here in a second. The one thing that, that I really like about this solution is that it reinforces our organization-wide performance standards and incorporates a lot of the same terminology and, I want to say, philosophy that we have in our pay performance system. It married, it meshes up perfectly with what this solution works out to be. And of course, as Michael points out, it empowers the employees to really be somewhat in control of their compensation trajectory, that's a Michael James term, trajectory, based on their individual performance. Time within classification, again, this values the job knowledge of, of experienced employees. It preserves institutional knowledge and, and reinforces that county vision statement, which emphasizes the importance of continuity of leadership and direction to sustain high-quality services for the residents. So now let's talk about solution. To talk about solution, when we have those three elements, we have market-based pay, we have time in classification, and we have the performance piece. I like to start at the base. The base is the brand-new employee, okay? So along with the guiding principle, we said, the executive team has determined that it would be appropriate for employees who are demonstrating competent and effective level of performance to reach market within seven to 10 years if they came in at the entry level, all right? So let's say, I'm going to take zero to 6.9 years in their classification. When we run the number... When we run the numbers based on the new market levels that are established by the consultant, and we measure where the employee currently is, their salary currently is as a percent to the market, we find that we have 320 employees that are below their standard of market, and of course, you can see what the average salary is and whatnot right there. But to get those employees up to their standard of market would be $669. Now, these are the employees that are under their percent of market. There are employees that are zero to 6.9 years that are above their expected market position. In this solution, they would not be adjusted because they are already being paid at or above the market which has been established for their classification. Now, let's see. I'm going to use this slide, and then I'll go back. Okay? So we start off with zero, and we go over here to 6.9 years. The understanding that the minimum of the pay scale starts at 75% of market, you have 100% of market is notated by the red line, and 125% of market. So someone who's brand-new to the organization, and let's just say, we're talking, for this example, someone with minimal, they meet the minimum qualifications for the job. They're hired at the minimum. They're going to be paid between 77% and 80% of market. If they have competent and effective performance based on our, at this point in time, I think we can say we have a sustained performance evaluation system, and there's been continuity in our, how we award performance pay. So a competent and effective performance, a person's getting at least 3% a year.
How long would you say we've had that level of?
We're in our sixth cycle this time, Julie. We're starting, this year will be our seventh annual cycle on that system. We have a lot of good data. When you can sustain a program over time like that, and you have an electronic platform where you can house that data and keep it, it becomes powerful over time because you can go back and you can look at trends, and you know whether or not you're making progress or not. So this assumes a 3% progression all the way down here to about 96% of market in six to 6.9 years. Okay? So again, within seven to 10 years, a person should be, based on their performance, if they're performing better than competent and effective, they're getting more than 3% a year. Okay? But based on their performance, they would exceed market down here in seven to 10 years. Visually, that's what this looks like. Now, seven to 10 years, these employees, our guiding principle says that these employees should be at market. They should be at market. So of the total number of employees that are within seven to 10 years in their current classification, we have 65 that are under market. They're not even being paid at market. Okay? So in this group, anybody that is at market or above would not be adjusted, wouldn't receive any adjustments. But those that are under market would be brought up to market, and you can see the cost associated with that. And by the way, that's not a fully loaded number, that's just compensation, not included in that list. Now, longer-tenured employees. Let me just say this before we have this discussion. This has been a great exercise to go through because it has definitely shown in a snapshot the impacts of past decisions this organization has made regarding how we compensate employees, how, you know, for a long time, we didn't have pay-for-performance. We had pay-for-performance, we went away from it, and came back to it. During that period, we didn't have pay-for-performance, it was just a cost of living or whatever. Okay?
And also for four years, we didn't have any pay.
And for years, we didn't have any pay increases before that. That's right. So the impacts of those things definitely start showing up in this group. Okay? So those employees, 10 to 30 years, adjust as a percent of market will be determined by the individual levels of job performance as demonstrated over a five-year period. What does that mean? So we took their last five years of annual evaluations, and we averaged them. We want to say, you know, you get five years' worth of good performance evaluation data, you average it, it should tell you a story about what that person's sustained job performance is over time. Okay? Over time, are you get, or do you have a highly effective employee? Do you have a competent and effective employee? What is it? Now, everybody knows that performance evaluations are somewhat subjective, right? For seven years, six years, excuse me, six years up to this point, we have had almost a perfect bell curve distribution in our scores without being a forced distribution. Our system does not say, supervisor, you can only have one outstanding employee, you can only have two highly exceeds employees, you can have 15 competent and effective employees. You know, it doesn't force the distribution. Now, part of the reason we have that, I like to think, is we do a good job of teaching and educating the supervisors. But every year, when those evaluations get done, Julie produces a pretty extensive management report for Cindy, who sits down and looks at the distribution and the results of each work area. Okay? If there are anomalies that are noticed, then there are follow-up conversations that are held as to why that may be. Okay? But it's very consistent in its application. So 10 to 30 years, we've got 168 employees that are under their percent of market standard. I'll show you what that means in just a second. There's a cost, $856,195.
That's an annual cost.
Yes, all this cost are annual.
That's annual cost. All right. So the 10 to 30-year group, I broke into three separate groups. A 10 to 14.9 years with a potential of being 105% of market, 15 to 19.9 years with a potential of being at 110% of market, and 20 years and over at a potential of being 115% of market, again, based on our current way of calculating performance increases. Now, this is where, this is where the creativity came in, into this process, and this is how we incorporated performance into this solution. So this is the example of employees that had 10 to 14.9 years with a potential of going to 105% of market. If an employee had a five-year performance evaluation average that scored between 2.0, which is competent and effective, and 2.19, then they were adjusted to 100% of market if they were not already at market. Surprising number how many were not at market. If they scored between 2.2 and 2.39, we adjusted them to 101% of market if they were not already at 101% of market. So if they were at 1.1 or higher, no adjustment. And the same thing all the way up. If their score, if they have a five-year average of 3.0 or higher, which is hard to obtain, 105% of market, if they were not already there. Same scale applied to the other two areas just like this, and then we did the calculations, and that's how we derived that number right there. That number, if we, one of our first calculations was just, you know, what does it look like if you took everybody to 105%, 110%, 115% that are in those time in classification bands? Well, the cost, of course, is higher. It was probably like a million five or something like that. So that cost, you know, by applying performance as a standard, not only did we reduce the overall cost of that, but I think it's a more efficient way, efficient use of the money, and a better way to reinforce the performance, the performance of performance in the organization. Okay? So let me, I've got some other stats right here that were not on the slides, I just want to share these with you. So when we talk, we've looked at distributions in terms of these years in classification. I looked at it in another way. Again, we have 38 pay grades in the new plan. So I wanted to know how many employees were receiving these adjustments, or how many employees were under their percent of market standard for their particular group, and how many of them were receiving adjustments in the particular pay grades. So the majority of the increases, or the majority of folks who are receiving adjustments below their market standard, range from pay grade 106, now, we start at 101. So 106 to 119 is the band where 96% of the employees are located that receive adjustments. 96%.
In all years?
Yeah. I said across the entire, across the board. So, you know, we're talking about, we're not talking about just highly compensated folks. We're talking about administrative assistants, we're talking about telecommunications, we're talking about deputy sheriffs, we're talking about social workers, income maintenance, caseworkers, people that are doing the work, or the ones that are being impacted by this the greatest. I guess I'll just say that. Okay? All right. So here we go. Approximately 553 employees are below, out of all of the categories in this solution, are below their percent of market rate standard. Now, are you starting to see a theme when we're talking about a percent of market? I mean, that's how we're going to start communicating to our employees in terms of what percent of market is your salary? You don't think it's fair, you don't think it's equitable, let's take a look. What percent of market is it? It's not about whether my best friend over here is making more money than I do, or I perceive he makes more money than I do, and I think that's not fair. Let's talk about what's fair for you and your performance as your salary is a percent of market. 565 employees are already at, or above their percent of market. So we've basically got a 50/50 split here. And 82% of the compensation adjustments occur between pay grades of 106 and 119. And I redid this calculation, so I don't know why I put 82% there, but it, I told you 96%, and that's what that number said. I might have hit the wrong key there, but it's 96%. Be glad for you to take a look at that if you like. So the annual investment, 2.183 million, and that is fully loaded, with the benefits You have already funded 500,000, and in order to fund this for the remainder of the year, would take 545,000, fully loaded, between now and the end of the year.
And with a lot of salaries due to vacancies, we have sufficient funds available.
All right. I'll be glad to answer any of your questions that I can.
We're making an assumption. When we talked about the half million dollars last year, we were talking full year, last year. Now we're cramming it into three, four months.
Well, actually, we had requested more money than that. The board produced it based upon a...
What we thought our full ability was.
Well, no, an implementation schedule of not having to budget for a full year is my recollection of what the decision was. For full disclosure, I do want to say a couple of things. One is, there were three positions that were recommended for adjustment. That was my position, that was the sheriff, and that was the registered deeds. None of those positions are included in those numbers because I think it's inappropriate for that discussion to be included here. I think those are board discussions as to what type of compensation they want to do. The other is, is that I thought it was very important to remain, since I went through this whole process with Mark and with Michael, as to remain as objective as possible. So I have seen nothing but raw data. I have no idea of the 553, or whatever the number is that are receiving adjustment, who those individuals are. And the reason I think that is so important is regardless of how objective we all try to be, we all carry biases as it relates to individuals. And so I wanted to make sure that as we went through this process, there was no bias as it related to, well, I know employee X, and I'm not sure that they deserve that kind of adjustment or not. So that was taken completely out of the equation. I'm sure Mark knows, but I'm not sure anyone else who that was on the leadership team. We have not been presented any of that information, and we chose not to because we didn't want our individual opinions to impact our recommendations here.
How do you handle professional hires? We're talking about being able to acquire talent without having to be the training facility for that. So, you know, when you look at your time in classification, you potentially can hire someone that's most superior in the group by professional hire. So how do you handle that?
That's a good question. That's a good question, and that really gets us into kind of the next phase of this project. We've got the, I call this, this is phase one, basically. Phase two is getting the job descriptions buttoned up and getting all those signed up for and whatnot. Phase three is really developing those guidelines, like, what is the hiring standard? What is the hiring range for professional positions? So I will tell you, there's been a lot of discussion on the leadership team amongst the directors about, you know, operationally, what, what would work and what would not work. Well, I took a lot of that conversation and went back and put together what I just, I call the concept. Okay? And I showed that concept to the work group, and they actually came, they, they refined my concept a little bit. So what we're, what we're looking at, and at this point, it is still concept. Okay? But, and I wish I had my whiteboard. I could show you a lot better way. I'm like showing it on the whiteboard. But what we're looking at, and one of the things that got pointed out, well, we have to remember, whether we like to refer to this organization as a lean or not, we're, we're a lean organization. We, we have generally one person to do this job and one person to do that job. There's not multiple specialties around the organization. Ed, I think Ed has an engineer that specializes in all the areas that he has to have engineers, but they are specialists in their engineering field. So we have one off across the board in all those. So when we go to hire those, does entry-level wage or entry-level hiring guidelines fit into that scenario? And it really doesn't. Okay? So the concept is that we'll be developing an entry-level hiring range based off a percent of market. So right now, I can tell you that we're, we're hiring, well, the average of the employees that we hired in the last 12 months, if I'm correct in this, we hired 84% of market. Okay? That's average. That, that may be hiring some at higher, that may be hiring some at minimum, you know, whatever. So if you have a, an, an entry-level range from minimum that encompasses your average, let's say goes a little bit higher than that, 88%, from, from 80 to 88% of market is a pretty good range to allow flexibility for hiring at an entry level. And I'll say entry level. Folks that, well, it's folks that have minimum qualifications or may have some transferable skills. Okay? A lot of jobs around here require specific local government experience. Yes, there may be transferable skills from the private sector, but it takes them a certain amount of time to get up to speed on the public sector side. Then there's a group of, the, the other group that we employ are folks with preferred skills. Maybe we're looking for an engineer in a certain, that has a certain number of years' experience in a public utility that, Ed may be giving me a good example, I'm sure he could. But the bottom line is, we're looking for a specific preferred skill set. So we would develop a preferred hiring range for those types of jobs. We're talking about, and when, when you look at a, a job description, typically what you see is minimal qualifications that are listed on that job. Bachelors in two years, whatever. Okay? Well, that works great for the entry-level range, but not so much for the preferred range. So what we're talking about in theory at this point is developing that preferred range, but also developing a preferred set of experience level that goes in the job description that matches. You want, you want to hire at the preferred range, that person has to have these preferred skill sets. Right now, in most job descriptions, you'll see, you'll see minimal qualifications or this, prefer a master's, prefer this, prefer that. But what does that mean? I mean, it just, it's a wish list, it's a want. It's really not tied back to a program per se, or a way of doing business. What we're, what we're talking about, and this, again, I won't, can't overemphasize the fact that it's in theory right now, it's, it's a concept we're developing, is develop those preferred set of skill sets documented in the job description that would allow a person to hire into a preferred hiring range. It may be 88% to market. In theory.
Well, and my point is, I wouldn't want to have entry level be low and miss that person with, for example,
Oh, no, no, no.
Health department jobs. Ed's got jobs that need certifications that can hit the road running.
You, you're hitting the nail right on the head. You're hitting the nail right on the head. This is, it, we share those concerns. And, and through this process, we, we could accept a consultant, qualified report, and along with a, and I don't, I don't want to sound, don't take this the wrong way, but a cookie cutter type of approach to a solution. Okay? And turn the page and go on about business tomorrow and what's changed. Right? I mean, that's what you're getting at. This is, this is not cookie cutter by any stretch of the imagination. And all of this is being developed with, in consideration of how this solution fits into, does it meet our mission? Does it meet our guidelines? Does it, how does it fit in with our other comp programs? And is it going to give us what we need to achieve and operate in the future? So we're trying to hit all of those things in this process.
Mark, can we go back to the numbers?
Sure.
What, uh, what percentage of payroll and benefits is 2,183,031?
Two and a half percent of total payroll.
And it would be half a million to
Implement now.
Implement now.
Yeah.
So if you, if you implemented it on July 1, would it be?
Two more.
It would be an increase of
Oh, yeah.
Of 5%? Because you're going, here's my, when I say 5%, that's your, 2% because of this study, and then your 3% that you're going, normally has as a part of payroll compensation.
Well,
Would that be 5% or not? 3% plus the 2% or it doesn't work that way?
Yeah, 3% is part of the evaluation process.
Yeah, that's, that's a different program.
I understand that, but I'm saying it wouldn't, it wouldn't be 5% probably.
Total funding. The, the performance evaluation process stands alone. So that's, that's, if that's, if the board funds that at 3%, then that's what that is. This is, this in essence is hitting the reset button and getting people to where they should be out, at their particular percent of market based on their performance and their tenure in classification. So if you're looking at, you've got a half million dollars already budgeted. So if you took that cost forward to next year, you're still, you're looking at additional 1,606 in funding to carry this, carry this recommendation forward into the new year.
I was just trying to bring a little respect. I was, I was here in 2010, and it had been, I think at that point, three or four years maybe, since any employee had been compensated with a pay increase. The board at that time charged the manager with finding money in the budget to compensate at least the cost of living increase. It was at that time that, that you folks implemented the performance evaluation system. I think employees want to have a transparent, fair means of compensation. It has proven itself as that with the bell curve. And I think in order to, to maintain qualified employees who want to perform and want to stay with an organization, that this is a wise investment. So, so I would move that we add 545,757,98 and the new implementation of, of the program.
We have the $500,000 that you all have already budgeted in this fiscal year. The 45,000, because of lapse salaries, we have physicians with, that are vacant and that we could make up that 45,000. So we have the monies to implement it effective April based upon prior board decision.
I would accept those clarifications.
Sorry.
Is that right? So we have a motion discussion.
I certainly support it. I think the fact that you've got five-plus years of merit-based decisions to go off of, and the fact that it will provide, as Mr. James likes to call it, a trajectory, a salary trajectory, career, career ladder, if you will, for employees and to know how to, to move not only themselves but their pay scale forward in this organization. I think it's, I think it's well thought out. I think it's, I think the fact that the five-year history that we have is what makes this not a cookie cutter. I think it's not, that, that may, that makes a difference in, in my eyes. So I applaud staff and manager and the prior board for implementing that merit-based discussions and decisions on an annual basis. I think it's fair to our employees. I think it's fair to the taxpayer. I think it's fair to the overall organization. So I, I fully support it.
Only question I have is, I agree with this. I support this program, but I would like to see a definite timeframe to add the other amenities you were talking about with the evaluation, professional hires and things like that. You've got, you know, so I'd like to see that very short.
Uh, I, I have directors that are lining up my door pushing me every day to get that done. Her name is Michelle Langsner. She wants, she wants, you know, and, and we're, it, it's, it is on, on the list. We got it, we got to get it done, but we're working toward it. We got to get, got to get this done first so we can turn our attention to some, some things like that.
Do we, do we have the slide as to timelines, as to the whole communication?
You're going to have to come over here and do that.
We, we have put together a timeline as it relates to communication, and I don't know that it speaks specifically to your step, or your question, but we have put together a timeline of how we see the different components if, if the board moves forward with motion as to how this would all work. One thing that we think is very important is that each employee will receive a notification as to how the study affects them. Even those who will not receive an adjustment, they need to be aware of that they were not adjusted and why they were not adjusted because of the market conditions.
They will understand their percent of market. What is their salary to percent of market?
So we, we've tried to come up with something with, to communicate to the overall employees, to communicate individually to the employees, as well as some of the things that we talked about with respect to, to job descriptions, et cetera, and getting those finalized, especially with the preferred aspect that Mark spoke of.
Are there questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Our employees, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we are about an hour ahead of schedule.
Wow.
And it's never happened.